Asking for your blessings. Blessings to our county, to our Commonwealth, and to our nation and to the world as we see turmoil from sea to sea. Heavenly Father, we know that you have the ability to calm the waters. Asking for your blessings, oh heavenly Father, as we go through these tumultuous times. Blessings as we fight through the COVID virus, knowing that you have the power to heal our land. Not only do we ask you to heal our land, oh heavenly Father, we ask you to heal our hearts. Make sure that we are better together than divided. Asking you once again, oh heavenly Father, to put us on one accord, that we may do the business of the county to our best of our ability. We give all thanks, all praise to you. Amen.
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 Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm gonna change the order a little tonight. I'm gonna actually start with my opening board comments and we will go from there. And I have basically three items. My first item, we had a request from the schools to consider raises for their employees tonight for the board meeting. But it's too early to determine how COVID will affect the county budget at this time. We are grateful not to be laying off county employees at this point. Many localities have already started down that path. I don't know another locality in the state considering raises at this point. But we can think in the positive and hope that we will be able, that we will not be hit as hard as predicted or as feared. And we can, as we have already pointed, our budgets can be revisited in a number of times and can come, we can start later in the year with revisiting budgets and we can look at where we are county-wise, budget-wise. But it's gonna take time for us to see what that impact is gonna be. As we have already pointed out, we can revisit as the numbers come and we can start from the state. And we can certainly meet with the schools in a joint meeting to see where we are later in the year. There is no reason we can't in July or August, see where our numbers are coming in from the state and start talking about that. I think it's an excellent opportunity for our boards to have all of our questions answered as well. As to the idea that there is some problem replacing the fire alarm, this is not the case. The money's included in this upcoming year's budget, and it's always been in the budget. It was reviewed in March. We've talked about it several times since, so the fire alarm has never been an issue. I'd like to thank Joni Rollins Davis for a peaceful protest on the courthouse lawn last Tuesday night. It was well attended and she did an excellent job on very short notice. I would also like to thank and congratulate Pastor Fieldses for their prayer on the courthouse lawn Sunday afternoon. Many of you here probably attended, as did I and many others. And it was well done and hopefully we start healing from there and start looking for solutions. Mr. Forehand, opening board comments.
I did get the opportunity to look at the school board meeting from last night. I thought it was a well-run meeting, lots of great stuff. Just a couple highlights, I want to commend you. The ADM came in five point, basically five and a half students difference, which is outstanding. When you're talking about forty-one hundred, forty-two hundred students, that's a win. We did get some numbers regarding school savings from the COVID crisis. We'll pat, those are available. It's under two-hundred thousand dollars, but that's, you know, it's an actual number. So it's great to have that considered. We always want that savings to be more, but we understand that things don't always go the way we want them to go. I am hopeful that we will have a swift economic and health recovery in the state of Virginia and in Caroline, as well as calming of the tensions. And optimistic that we have some conversations we're considering in the very near future, that they will pan out. And we will have some fruitful content from those coming up in the next couple of weeks. So stay tuned for those and thank you.
Mr. Black?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to say, because I saw a bunch of the emails that went out from the teachers over the last, I guess, twenty-four, forty-eight hours, I was able to talk to several teachers that are in my district. And I had some great conversations. There was one teacher today that I talked to for over an hour, so there was really, really good dialogue there. And I think sometimes there's a misunderstanding. People see stuff on social media and of course, if it's on social media, it's gotta be true. And sometimes, you know, there's misunderstandings on both sides. I do want to thank Dr. Calverick for the email that went out last week asking for the meeting. In listening to the school board meeting last night, I was able to listen to it from home. And I did just want to clarify a few questions because as a teacher myself, the fire alarm, I just want to double check and triple check on that. It is in the budget for July first, right, for Lewis and Clark?
That is, Lewis and Clark and Admin. It's two replacements, a hundred thousand dollars in the school CIP.
Okay. Now, my question is, I mean, for me, and maybe, maybe I'm mistaken. This is the first time that I heard about the fire alarm being, I know it was near, like being, being something that was like imminent and imminent danger. Is there, for us, is there a difference between making a decision on that tonight or waiting till the July first? Is it, is it a huge difference? Because right now, we're three weeks away. So I mean, that's my, that's my only question is, with that three weeks, because that money is in their budget.
Mr. Black, I was actually gonna ask.
All right, well, that's, yeah, that's, that's, but I, okay.
You want me to answer now or you want to wait till we have a specific agenda item?
Answer it now, please.
I don't, I don't believe the revenues there was gonna be transferred from retention center funds into their CIP. So if it was appropriated now, it would just be appropriating that basically early to the 20 budget. They signed POs and started work and it would accrue back to the 20 budget even though they may not finish it until August of 21. So it would allow them to start earlier, sign a PO and get to work sooner than waiting three weeks.
So it's just, it's just, it's just the three weeks difference? That's the?
It doesn't, it doesn't affect us money-wise. It's not like?
I guess that was my big question is, is, okay. So it's just a matter of timing and, and maybe, maybe we can get an answer on that. If the difference is ten weeks or seven weeks, get it done.
Right.
That's what we're talking about.
Okay.
That's fine. I just, I just wanted to know, I mean, it was, because there was something put out there saying that it wasn't in the budget. It was a, it was not in the budget. And I, I just want to clarify that and make sure that it was in the budget, that it was being taken care of. And then we can talk about the timing if that's fine. The other thing, in listening to the school board meeting last night and, and something was brought up and it disturbed me a little bit on our end, and maybe you can clarify it. But it, there was a statement that was made that the April appropriation from the county was not given to the schools. Is that accurate?
It's accurate to a point that the transfer journal entry wasn't done, doesn't move cash, moves it into their books. I confirmed with the treasurer today that she's been continuing to pay bills and that was just a finance department issue. I didn't, nobody had ever asked me about it, so I didn't hear about it till Mr. Forehand asked me this morning. It was done today. It was already in process in finance.
You got no emails about it last week?
Not that I ever saw. There were any questions about the transfer, but if, if it was being worked on by finance. We do have an interim finance director, so he reviewed it today and made that transfer, but it's paper. The checks and processing of bills are handled by the treasurer's office. And I spoke with her. She said she hadn't held up anything. Everything was being paid.
So the teachers were still getting paid and?
Everything was being paid.
Okay. So there was nothing, nothing illegal going on here at all?
No, okay.
I just?
We, prior to 2017, maybe 2018, the treasurer only transferred what they were spending at the time. So that's why when they had that reversion fund of 2016 that Dr. Parker and we created, they didn't actually get all the money, which then sort of threw us into a loop because it wasn't transferred for their budget to actually revert back to us. But the cash always stays with the treasurer. It's just accounting between their accounting system and our accounting system.
Because if you divide their budget, what's fourteen million divided by quarterly payments, right? So if you do the math on this, three and a half million.
Right, and that's what?
So I just want to make sure that we weren't holding up three and a half?
We were not holding anything up from them paying?
Yeah, because I was, I was trying to figure that out last, wrap my head around that. Like if they, if they were missing three and a half million from their budget, how were they able to pay? How would they be able to, I mean, they should have been, you know, they would have been knocking our doors down, saying, hey, wait a second here, we're missing three and a half million from you.
There was accounting. And so they do need it, or they would, their system would be going negative, but the treasurer was still paying the bill.
Okay, all right. And the last thing, I did get, I did get a bunch of constituents that were happy with the appointments that were taking place at our, in our offices. They thought that was going actually pretty well. That system was actually going pretty well and was running smoothly in the county offices. That's it for my opening board comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mrs. Long? Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of comments. My first comment is I would like for us to really make sure that we're pushing internet connectivity in the Reedy Church District. Because I think many of our students are gonna be relying more and more on the internet for some of their educational needs. And we need to make sure that that infrastructure there is up to par. So that students who are out in the far rural areas, like I know I'm in Port Royal, we have some issues. And certainly have some issues down in the Reedy Church District, that I'd like to see us continue to push very hard and put that on top of mind awareness so that our students are not impacted. My second comment is, I would like for us to remember that while we're losing money during the budget process, we need to be smart, because we can't come back next year and say we funded everything in the budget at a time when we're going, knowing that we're gonna lose revenue. So I think we have to really be smart to make sure we scrub our budget to do the best we can so that we don't have a very negative impact on the budget next year. My third comment is, part of the CARES Act funds that were, that are being sent to the county, are any of those funds gonna be made available for loans or for our local small businesses, Mr. Cully?
We are proposing that. I don't remember the amount, but yes, we are proposing. It's around 10% of the money.
You're proposing that? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We propose to give that to the EDA to issue out those, those grants.
All right, thank you. My next comment is, today I got a call from Mr. Sparks, who's a son of the Confederacy. And we talked briefly about the statue that's in Bowling Green. And I think at some point, we're gonna have to sit down. I don't propose we do it anytime soon. We got enough on our plate with COVID and budget and so forth. But at some point, I think we need to really bring all of the players in, on the daughters of the Confederacy, the sons of the Confederacy, and begin to have a dialogue about our Confederate statues and our Confederate, we, he and I had an hour-long good conversation today. So I thought that was excellent. I think it's a good start, but I think we can take more of a lead with the situation. My final comment is, I would ask this board to take an eight-minute and forty-six-second recess in honor of George Floyd. Because this is really enlightening a lot of people, opened a lot of people's eyes. And I think it would only be fair that we take an eight-minute, forty-six-second moment of silence or recess. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had to unmute myself first, so I do appreciate that. I, I attended a web conference call with Congressman Whitman and Chairman Pye on, from the FCC on broadband grants. On that call was also Atlantic Broadband, so we, we have some sort of synergy in working with them to get more, more broadband throughout the county, which has been a really a big thing for all of us. I've asked Mr. Finchen to do, to create a planning text amendment for religious meeting halls. Just so the board will know, churches are by right in the RP district, but a religious meeting hall, which would be similar to a church, is not. So you should be working on that. I believe Mr. Sadler is working on the expansion of broadband at the, at the Dawn Library. So if, if we can get an update from him, that would be great. And really, to tell you the truth, whatever concerns I, I, I have or comments, they really pale in light of what's going on in, in the nation and throughout the world. We've had people in London, Paris, Berlin, Berlin of all, of all places are speaking out for equal justice. And as I told another board member in a conversation, I can't fix this problem. A minority cannot fix this problem. I can help fix this problem, but the majority has to help fix this problem. So in that vein, we've been discussing things and, and I'm at the point where I can put together the first of what we're gonna call diversity meetings or conversations on race. And it's likely looking at next Tuesday, which is June 16th, or Thursday, June 18th, here in the EOC. If the board will allow us to meet in the EOC, since we're using the auditorium, we might as well use the EOC. And I've spoken to several ministers, the sheriff, the school board chair, and several other folks who've expressed interest. And I'd like to get a board of supervisors volunteers so, so we can have something. And what I intend to do is send out an email to all those who volunteered before, so we can confirm the date tomorrow for either next Tuesday or next Thursday. But I, I heard, heard somebody say, if you, if you can take advantage of the moment you all have, you can make a difference in the world. And this is, this is the moment we all have, so let's all work together to make a difference. That's the end of my comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Amendments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add, before six, perhaps five a.m., the discussion of early funding that, the capital money for the 2021 budget for the fire alarm. I'll, I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it motion carried. We have adopted the agenda for this evening. First, under Presentations and Reports, we have Congressman Rob Whitman, who represents the first congressional district which Carolina is part of. So I'd like to welcome you to the board meeting, Congressman Whitman.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And it's an honor and a privilege to be back here before the board. And as I open up, I want to reflect too on the comments from all the board members. And that is, all of us are in deep anguish, not just as a community and a Commonwealth, but as a nation with the deaths of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and countless others who have died tragically and needlessly. And we all see that change has to occur. And it's up to everyone. This, I think, is the moment in our history where we have to be able to take on these issues head-on. They are going to be difficult ones. They're gonna be ones that take very frank discussions. They're gonna be ones that require tough decisions. But I believe that we have it within all of us to do that. I think we have to look inwardly and say, what can we do? We, each individual, as a community, and then together as a Commonwealth, and then together as a nation. There will be a hearing tomorrow in the Judiciary Committee in Washington concerning the issues surrounding the federal connections to law enforcement. What can we do to make things better? What can we do to make sure that there's transparency, that there's accountability there? We want to be able to address areas where the system that's designed to protect and serve hasn't worked. How do we do that? The vast majority of that happens locally with the sheriff, with the board of supervisors, and at the state level with the governor and with the state police. But there is an element of federal nexus there. We want to make sure that we are there and helping to address these problems. But the best thoughts and ideas are gonna come from folks locally. And just as Mr. Thomas had spoken about a diversity council, we have a series of those councils that are gonna be meeting across the district. We call it Unity and Diversity Action Councils, and we're gonna be coming up with ideas of what we can do to offer locally, at, at the state level, at the Commonwealth level, and at the national level to address solutions to these problems. It's great to have the conversations and we have to have very frank conversations. But out of all of this, we need to have action items, things that we can do that will indeed move things in the right direction. This isn't gonna be solved overnight, but it will be solved when everyone across the community comes together and gives their ideas and then commits to putting those actions into place. I want to thank the board of supervisors here in Caroline County. You've heard from all the comments of the board members, not only the acknowledgement, but the commitment to address things. I know in talking to Sheriff Lippa, you have the same commitment and direction there on making sure that our systems work, work the way they're supposed to and work regardless of the color of someone's skin, period. That's, that's our job. Wanted to touch base on a couple of other things also as a Washington update. The element of broadband, we understand, is critically important. In fact, with COVID-19, we've seen how important broadband is, especially in rural areas. Whether it's businesses that have to look at different ways to do business, whether it's school systems looking at ways to provide instructions to students when they can't be together there in the classroom, whether it's the delivery of healthcare as hospitals and doctors' offices are, are limited to seeing just COVID-19 patients. We see the critical importance of broadband. The good news is that there are actually some dollars in the CARES Act to be able to provide a conduit to be able to get broadband into rural areas. We've seen some pretty innovative ways that counties are actually working with fixed wireless providers and putting antennas and transmitters in school buses, parking them in areas where they could transmit. To me, that's the conduit to say, okay, if we can put a school bus there and provide broadband, why can't we replace that after this is over with, with a permanent structure? So looking at those things, there are dollars in the CARES Act to do that. There are counties around that we're working with that are looking at using those CARES Act dollars to finish building out their systems. In rural areas, the last miles of connections are most likely going to be fixed wireless. Most of the areas that you can get to by fiber optic have already been done. Couple of good things going on. We had a virtual fireside chat with the chairman of the Federal Communications Commission, Ajit Pye. And it was a great, great effort. You heard Supervisor Thomas talk about that. There is the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, which provides about 20.2 billion dollars to help in extending broadband into rural areas. And I would encourage the county to, to look into opportunities, to be able to apply for those funds. There are funds that are gonna be leveraged to help accelerate investment in broadband in rural areas. So looking at existing providers that are in those areas and looking at all of them. This is technology agnostic. So whether it is a fiber optic company, whether it's a, a cable company, whether it's fixed wireless, all those companies, I think, have something to offer to create the fabric of coverage in our rural county. So we look forward to working with you on that. I have also have a bill in called the Secure Rural America Act. And that puts about 500 million dollars into providing the wherewithal to leverage private dollars, state dollars, and local dollars with federal dollars to accelerate the build-out of our broadband system. And we've been working together with folks in Washington, as well as folks at the state level with the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative, with Evan Feinman in the governor's office, to look at every way and every corner where we can leverage resources. That's what this is gonna take. If you look at the total bill of what it will cost to build out broadband across the United States, that is in every area where people want broadband. Obviously, there's gonna be some places where people want to be off the grid. We're not gonna force construction of systems where people want to be off the grid. But in, in the rest of the nation, I believe the bill is gonna be about 80 billion dollars. So you can see the magnitude of what we're talking about. But if you take the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, if you take my bill, Secure Rural America Act, if you take the dollars that the state has put forward in the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative, if you look at the private investment, if you're able, able to leverage all of those dollars, I think that we can very quickly get these systems built out. I want to make sure that we are aggressively pursuing those dollars. And you have my commitment that I will stand with you in support of your efforts to be able to leverage those dollars for Caroline County as you talk to different providers out there. Again, this is technology agnostic. So whatever we can do to get dollars here to help with that, we understand how critically important it is. And I think as we see what's happened before us, there's a renewed effort that's going to be underway to be able to get this done. There's some talk about an infrastructure bill. I think it would be great in the infrastructure bill if at the very top of the list, it said, "Fund rural broadband." I think those are gonna be critically important aspects of what we have to do. So we're looking forward to working with the county on that. There was also an improvement to the Paycheck Protection Program to change some of the requirements there so that as businesses look at what they need to do to apply, to have their Paycheck Protection Program loans forgiven. The metric was 75% of those dollars had to go to personnel. 25% could go to other costs. That is rent. That is interest on a mortgage. That is utilities. The percentage now has been changed, so it's much more friendly to qualifying for those loans to be forgiven. It's now only 60% has to go to personnel and 40% can go to other qualified costs. So that's gonna help a lot of businesses because of the challenges they have with payroll and, and determining whether to keep somebody on and continue to pay them or to have them off the payroll, have them collect unemployment benefits and then come back. Again, a whole dynamic of many times, things business owners can't control. So even though they may want to have 75% of the dollars going out the door for payroll, many times they can't because their employees are going in a different direction. So this gives them the ability to, to be flexible with that. And I think it will qualify many more of these loans to actually become grants, which is, which is going, going to be the key. Another element too of what's come up recently is comments concerning the names of various military installations across the United States. Initially, the Secretary of the Army, Ryan McCarthy, said that they were not gonna consider changes to names. He has now reversed his direction on that. He said they will consider the changing of names for United States military bases that are named after officers in the, in the Civil War. So that would mean Fort AP Hill in Virginia, Fort Pickett in Virginia, and Fort Lee could all be under consideration for name changes, including big installations like Fort Bragg and Fort Benning. So that is, that is in the offing. So just to give you all a heads up, that that could be something that the secretary reaches out to the county or communities to, to determine what direction he wants, wants to take with that. And I want to thank Lieutenant Colonel Gates for his service, has done an extraordinary job there at, at Fort AP Hill. I know he's doing everything he can under very trying circumstances with, with COVID-19 and all the challenges he faces there on the base with forced protection, while at the same time, making sure that the base is available for what we all enjoy. And I'll tell my story, Lieutenant Colonel Gates. As you know, growing up here, just as you have, you're, you're a Virginian. When I grew up here, I, I remember when I was a kid, going to Fort AP Hill to hunt. And my dad was a, was a quail hunter back in the days where there were quail around. And we'd go there and quail hunt and then rabbit hunt. And I know lots of people thoroughly enjoy the opportunity to go there and enjoy the outdoor sports at Fort AP Hill, both hunting and fishing. So I know how important it is to folks. I know how incredibly important it is to, to the community. And I appreciate you coming here to, to clarify, give a little history on where things are, where things are going forward. We are as, as passionate about this as many folks that have contacted you, other folks that have gone out there in social media and done that. But I, I do believe that it's incredibly important for us to be able to do both. And I think we can. I think we can make sure that you fulfill your mission in training the nation's warriors. And by the way, this is, this is a, a, a star in the sky of our United States military for training our warriors to make sure they're prepared in whatever we ask them to do. So Fort AP Hill is critical. That is mission number one there. And I know that the Lieutenant Colonel has his objective there. But what we want to make sure too is that he's doing everything possible, and I know he will, to make sure that it's accessible as it has been through the years. It really becomes part of, of this community. It becomes part of this region. You know, people associate their outdoor activities, especially hunting and fishing there with, with, with Fort AP Hill. So I deeply appreciate that. And Mr. Chairman, at this point, I will yield and take any questions that board members may have.
Board member questions? Mr. Black?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Congressman Whitman, thank you.
Yes.
I just said a couple of things on the, as far as the internet, all that money sounds, that sounds wonderful because I think as a teacher myself in the Spotsylvania County school system, remote learning was, was challenging. I'm in an rural area of Spotsylvania, and I, I know it's probably the same for here in Caroline. One of the things a couple of years ago, and this was, this was the frustrating part for us, so we, a couple of years ago, we, we So we, a couple of years ago, we, we actually had a sit down with Comcast. And I remember you came to us, the George Washington Regional Commission about Verizon. And we had a sit down and we, we thought we made a fair proposal to them on how we want to just kind of do a pilot program to, to expand it here outside of some of the HOAs where, you know, there's a denser populations, kind of cherry pick some of the rural areas that are mostly densely populated and start from there. And Mr. Parton was in on that meeting, Mr. Cully was in on that meeting. They said they'd get back to us and then they vanished. And that is, that is a concern that I have is with all this money that's, that's available to some of these carriers, are they going to play ball? Are they, you know, are, are they going to sit down at the table with these, some of these localities and, you know, and actually say, hey, look, it's, it's time? And, and what, I guess, what guarantees can we get that, that, that will happen?
Supervisor Black, that's a great question. And we, we can't force them to the table, but what we can do is to structure how federal funds would be available to make it attractive for them to leverage their dollars with it to accelerate their investments. And that's really what this is all about, to accelerate investments. It is not anybody's intention to build government-run networks. And let me tell you why, because as you know, technology changes. And the good news is, is let me tell you one of the, one of the definitions here that is critically important, and that is these dollars are going to go to areas that are considered unserved. Now, previously unserved meant you had nothing. Today, unserved means that you have less than 25 megabytes per second download speed and less than three megabytes per second upload speed. And in today's realm of streaming and what we do with data, anything less than that really is not high speed. So that's good news in that dollars will only go for technology that is in that realm, which means as we put dollars in, we want to make sure that those are dollars that result in upgradable technology.
Right.
So if you build a, if you build what we call hard infrastructure, if you build a structure to put an antenna on, or if you hang fiber optic on a pole, or if you put it in the ground, that's baseline technology. So that's upgradable. And the neat thing about it is, is you can change the hardware and make those systems faster and to do more. So we want to make sure we're not putting money into things that have to be totally taken down and then reinvested. So we want to make sure that's where it is. We want to make sure too that these systems are about having a company that's going to be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance. That's a key too. I do think that these programs, the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund and Secure Rural America Act, will provide the incentives for various businesses to enter into this realm. One thing I would encourage the county to do, and I understand Comcast has a footprint here, but there are a number of other companies out there, and I, I'm not advocating for one over another, but there are a number of other companies out there that are looking to expand a footprint into other areas. And they're not worried about being contiguous. So they're not worried about having a big area and making sure that it's connected physically. They're fine with coming in and placing a little fixed wireless system there because they know too that, that they can build that out potentially with competition and fixed wireless with the higher end technology. And the good thing is the Federal Communications Commission is opening up spectrum for that to happen. That high frequency spectrum is very high quality. It penetrates trees, which has been a geographic impediment to high speed. It also helps get over some geography. So that technology is going to be there. So I would encourage the county to, to look at other purveyors out there, talk to other counties, because there are other companies that are in the fixed wireless business that are stepping outside what has been the conventional business plan to say, you know, we're going to do this and we're just going to build, 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 build. Some are willing to just come in and say, listen, you show us your unserved areas of the county, boom, we're going to come in and willing to build a head-in facility and, and build out fixed wireless. So I, I would definitely do that. So you can continue to have conversations with the current providers in the county, but I would encourage you also to step out to others and then let them know, say, hey, we're talking to a lot of different people. So if you're interested in expanding your footprint in Caroline County, here's your opportunity.
I know, I know that Mr. Thomas and Mr. Sealy are working on it, but one last thing from a regional perspective, because you've come to the George Washington Regional Commission, are these, are these grants and loans that are available? Are they, is it better to do a regional approach or can you go county by county? Because a lot of times like in Virginia, in the state of Virginia, they want you to, to partner up with like Caroline King George, you know, is, or is the federal dollars still like that as well, or is it more you can do your own thing per, per locality?
Well, I think you'll always get a higher score if you can serve a bigger area. So two things I think to keep in mind is if you can partner with others, whether it's another locality or multiple providers, if you can have a bigger footprint, if you can bring down your cost per connection in what you're applying for, I think all those things increase the competitiveness of your application. And, and we've seen that with, with VODI, but we also see that at the federal level. What I'd like to do too is, as we, as more of these federal dollars become available, it would be nice to have them block granted to the states because the states get it. The states know these areas. They know the projects, they know the players there. I think they can much, much more efficiently get dollars there. The current Reconnect USA program within the Department of Agriculture is one that, while it sounds good and there's money there, it really isn't applicable to our area because our population densities are too high, even though we're, we are very rural. The, the application process started out with a 300-page application. Localities don't have the ability, especially smaller ones don't have the ability to, to do that. So they're trying to simplify that, pare it down. It would be best instead of reinventing the wheel and have people make multiple applications is to send the dollars to the states through block grants and let the states determine how to parse those dollars out.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
On the spectrum issue, as you mentioned, you know, we were all forced to change our radio system, public, you know, public safety system a few years back. We have moved the 800 megahertz frequency. I know that 800 megahertz is super attractive to everybody in the wireless environment because of the longevity and the length of the signal, and it really penetrates a lot. How do we ensure as we move forward that they don't come to us and go, hey, you're in 800 megahertz, we're taking it away from you? Because a lot of localities, as you know, you were on the Board of Supervisors, bought into 800, 900 megahertz, which is critical for sheriff, fire and rescue, the school system, public works, public utilities. It costs us a lot of money. Plus a maintenance contract that was, was almost as much as the contract to do that. And I would hate to lose that investment.
Well, we've been pretty adamant with the FCC to make sure we guard those frequencies and that we guard frequencies that already are in, in the permitted state for small internet service providers. Because that high quality spectrum is what they need to serve their customers. If they take the high quality spectrum away from them, like the 800 megahertz, and even now 2.5 gigahertz and even higher, which are all great, great spectrum, we want to make sure that when it comes to public safety, when it comes to the United States military, that, that we are giving priority to those. The debate right now is some spectrum that has been used for GPS. And, and the FCC has opened up some of that. There's a big pushback in saying you can't do that and endangers GPS signals, all those kinds of things. So there's a pretty heated debate going on. We just had a, a hearing in the Armed Services Committee about that. So I think what you'll find is if the, if there is an effort to jump in and in any way, shape or form, move that, that spectrum around like they did for digital TV to try to free up spectrum for other, other purposes.
Other UHF and VHF frequencies they took.
Exactly. I, I think you'll find a big pushback because you, you've seen things happen in the FCC that, you know, don't make you feel real comfortable about them moving spectrum around. But I can tell you that the Congress is, is very attuned to what the FCC is doing. And I, I can tell you, there would be a, a mass pushback if they tried to, to move the public safety frequencies out and sell them at auction for, for broadband.
Mr. Thomas or Mr. Underwood, comments, questions?
Yes, I definitely have one, and I'm sure the Congressman knows my comment before I even get to it. It's about E-rate for government, and we've been trying to expand the county's broadband footprint with, with the best technology there is, which is fiber at this time. And I know that E-rate is basically subsidized funding for the school system. And in a rural county with less than 50% coverage for most of its residents, I would think we would apply, or we could apply for some sort of E-rate discounts that we could help folks.
Mr. Thomas, that's a great point. We've had a lot of questions about E-rate. And where I think it makes sense is if schools are, are having that E-rate for them to have connectivity at schools, the question is now is if you're doing distance learning and your students now have a tablet, it's an extension of what they have in the school system. So the question then becomes is can E-rate be used for students outside the classroom? Can it be used for their service at home if a family has a student or multiple students there? I think that's something that we need to pursue with the county. I, I think that those dollars ought to be available, especially with what we see right now. So I'd love to work with the county, Mr. Thomas, and see if we can't get a determination on E-rate to be used for students outside the classroom. I, I think today we have to do that. So that's a great point and another opportunity for the county to be able to leverage dollars to make sure that we have high speed available in every corner of the county.
Well, you know, I'll follow up and I'll be in touch. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, that's okay. Mr. Underwood.
Congressman Whitman, I just have one question for you.
Sure.
Are there any documents available for us to read regarding the, how the priorities are going to be set for the funding that we can get ahead of the rank and file?
Absolutely. I will make sure that I get those to you. Chairman Pai, the other day, was very forthright about how the dollars are going to be parsed out. So we'll make sure we get you that documentation about what the requirements are going to be, the application process, how they're going to unfold that. And we'll make sure we get it to the county and I'll get, get you as well as all the other board members a copy of that. So we'll do that.
Thank you, Congressman.
Thank you.
Mrs. Long?
Yes. Congressman Whitman, a couple of years ago down at Tappahannock, we talked about getting a comprehensive map to locality showing not just what companies claimed as their zone, but where they actually provided connection. Did that project get done because we all were getting a runabout? So we went to the big guys and hasn't been kept up? Do we have a current map?
Well, there, there are two, two elements of that effort that are going on. One is at the state level to try to get information that's non-attributable. So it's not like a company has to say, this is a Verizon customer or area of coverage, or this is a Comcast area of coverage, just to make sure that there's not the provision of what they call sensitive business information. And some of that's come along. It is, it is still not, I think, a map with the level of accuracy that we need. But I think the more effective way to do it is this. And through the application process, what the FCC is going to do is to say, we're going to allow anybody to apply for money to cover any area. And we're going to put that out there publicly. And if another company believes that, that this company is, is stepping on their area, then it's their obligation to have to come up and say, no, 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 we already serve those folks. Because remember, we're going to use the definition of unserved. So if a company comes in and says, here's our area, we think this area is unserved, and unless another company comes up and says, no, we actually provide service of 25 and three, then, then they can have the debate. So it kind of puts the onus of proof on the companies that are already in the marketplace, which I think is a very effective way to, to go about doing that. And then it gets us away from continuing to chase a map. Because remember, if a company gives information to the state or the federal government today, you know, tomorrow, they're going to be adding new customers. So the map is automatically antiquated. So if you make this a competitive process where you let anybody apply, you let anybody say that this area is not served by high speed, then it's up to the other companies out there to go, no, 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 wait a minute, this is our service area. And they're forced to divulge that.
It's a good way to get around it since they were so cooperative.
Yes. Well, it's you, what, what, what we find is there's a, there's a great motivating factor when somebody's going to jump into somebody's service area.
Mr. Forehand?
Congressman, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
I just want to point out a couple of things. One, our county fair has, has been canceled this year, so we missed the, that time. Generally, we spend that with you and thank you for coming down for that. Wanted to point out for everybody that Congressman Whitman has actually had one-on-one contact with half the Board of Supervisors in the last two weeks individually. We're not your only county. There's many more. We're a small county population-wise and it's, you know, you're working for us. And, and so we, we thank you for that. It's very much appreciated. And to piggyback on the, on the broadband, there was an online survey, just a random survey by, by someone in the community about what they love about Caroline and then what they would like to change. And for those that had broadband or available broadband, they wanted a, another grocery store or Chick-fil-A. But the vast majority of folks that, that actually commented on this was quality internet service. And, you know, it affects real estate, affects the, the home business market. I mean, you know all these things. Just, and of course, it, it affects the ability to learn from that, from that media. So again, we, we appreciate you coming out. It's great seeing you. Sorry I don't get, get a chance to talk to you more.
Well, Supervisor Forehand, thank you. Thanks, thanks for all the board members and your leadership. Thanks for, you know, staying in touch with us, giving us the opportunity to help. And I think you hit the nail on the head. If I, if I had to tell folks the number one issue in rural areas, it would absolutely be head and shoulders above everything else, broadband. So it's our obligation to be able to get that. We've got resources, let's get them to the right places, get them there quickly. You know, the, the, the governor's objective is 10 years. I think we can do it much, much faster than 10 years. I think the pieces are starting to come together for that. So I'm looking forward to, to more conversations about how many additional folks in Caroline now are covered by broadband areas.
Mr. Black says he wants one more go back.
I just, I just have one question because when we've had those constituent meetings before, and I do appreciate when you come down, we have the national, state and local, and obviously COVID this year has, has interfered with that. So I do thank you. But there's one question that I always like to ask, and, you know, we've got a bunch of teachers here and, I mean, students are the future. And one of the things that I always, because I, I'll be honest, I'm fiscally conservative is like at a, at a county level, we have to have a balanced budget. At a state level, the state of Virginia has to have a balanced budget. At a national level, you can just go online and see this national debt ticker. And my question to you is how, I mean, I'm not an economist, but how do you ever solve that?
Well, it becomes more and more difficult. As you know, with the additional dollars that were borrowed for the CARES Act and the other things we're doing to try to keep the economy on track, that's, that's a bill that's going to have to be paid. So now we're, now we're talking about a deficit that's approaching $27 trillion. And I have a hard time getting my head around that. It is not going to be our generation. It will be our children and our children's children that address that. The first thing we have to do is to establish a balanced budget. And at some point, the amount of debt that we carry is going to have an impact. For those people that say it's not, I adamantly disagree with them. It will, I would argue, it will impact us much sooner because of the additional dollars that we've had to borrow based on what's happened with COVID-19. We absolutely have to do that. I have a, a tough time getting my head around a trillion dollars, but I'll give you this just, just to think about because it makes my head spin. If you were to represent a million dollars with a stack of $1,000 bills, your stack would be about four inches high. If you represent the current budget debt or the current budget deficit as reflected in the total amount of debt, your stack of $1,000 bills would be nearly 74 miles high. Yeah. That's, that, that, that gives you an indication about, about where we are. So we have got to, we've got to be able to, to do more. Listen, we've always been a nation that's been a, a nation of innovators and creators. We have to do that. I'll talk about another thing strategically too. Our nation has to get back to being less dependent on other nations. Listen, it's great to be able to get things that are less expensive, but I think we see the predicament it puts us in when we have these strategically challenging times. If we are over-dependent on other nations that are not our friends, I think those are going to be critical things that shape our economy going forward. I think those things though will help. And while it does cost more to produce things in the United States because of labor and because of other requirements that we have that aren't in other nations, it also creates a much more self-sustaining economy. So I would, I would argue that it's in the long term best for the nation. And it's one of the ways that we can get ourselves out from underneath this massive amount of debt faster is if we bring more of those industries back that have gone overseas. And I could go on and on about what those industries are. But anyway, I think that's a way that we can do that.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
And one last thing, it's the 700, 900 megahertz frequencies. We're in the 700, 900, 800 that we don't want to lose.
Gotcha. Well, I, I've, I've got that on my list to make sure with Chairman Pai. And I've said it multiple times to make sure that, that those frequencies are preserved and they don't get anywhere near them. I think they're looking at higher frequencies there, which, which is good, so.
Thank you so much for coming this evening and hope to see you again in the very near future.
We, we, we will see you even if at six feet distance with, with my face mask on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next this evening on the hunting and fishing topic at Fort AP Hill is Lieutenant Colonel Michael Gates, Garrison Commander and Sergeant Major.
Thank you, Congressman, for your comments and the great support from you and your staff. I really appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Sealy, members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Colley, Sheriff Lippa, Chief Loftus, and many friends of Fort AP Hill with us tonight, including our valued partners from the school board. Thank you so much. On behalf of Major General Omar Jones, Commanding General of U.S. Army District of Washington and Senior Commander of Fort AP Hill, I'd like to express my deep appreciation for all the support shown throughout my command by this board and the citizens of Caroline County for the military mission of Fort AP Hill and the United States Army. For my family and I, Congressman mentioned, after years of serving overseas, it's been an honor and privilege to return home to the great Commonwealth of Virginia while continuing to serve our nation. As our outstanding neighbors across Caroline County know, Fort AP Hill's mission to provide training support to America's sons and daughters is they prepare to protect and defend our nation. Over the past year, approximately 50,000 young men and women passed through the installation. Frequently, units are completing their final training before deploying. Within the past year, seven service members who conducted their pre-mission training at Fort AP Hill gave their lives in defense of freedom overseas. We deeply appreciate the outstanding support from Caroline County and surrounding localities, which helps us, our team, to ensure that those young men and women are ready to perform their missions in support of our nation. To that, thank you. Thank you so much. Now, I'd like to provide an update on our hunting and fishing program. This year, we hosted a complete and very successful 2019 deer season, resulting in 555 deer harvested, which represents an increase of almost 27% over last season. Also notable is the 198 waterfowl harvested over the past year, which represents a 37% increase over the previous year. However, as many of you are aware, we've also experienced unforeseen and unprecedented challenges in 2020, as we all have recognized. We had to temporarily suspend hunting and fishing programs in January 8, 2020 to meet enhanced force protection measures directed by United States Northern Command in response to world events. Meeting these additional protection measures required enhanced manning to ensure the security of our installation boundaries and our access control points. Therefore, we shifted conservation law enforcement officers from hunting and fishing program to post-level security. The temporary hunting and fishing suspension applied to all patrons regardless of affiliation, including all military and installation employees, including myself and Sergeant Major. And as many of you know, one of my favorite pastimes is going fishing with my son, my young son. Deeply, you know, it's one of my bonds with my son. And we go out there and teach him patience, respect of nature, and it's been hard, you know, for a young man, keep asking me, Daddy, when are we going to get to fish again? But the rules apply to everybody, rules apply equally to everyone. Through dedicated force enhancements, we are working diligently to reopen our programs for spring turkey season. Again, as Congressman mentioned, you know, I grew up in the mountains of western Virginia. In Bonnetown County, turkey hunting is a critical part of the culture there. I deeply respect it and it broke my heart that we couldn't meet that due to the COVID crisis. Unfortunately, as a state, as the rise of COVID-19 health and safety concerns extended the temporary suspension of hunting and fishing activities. The security, safety, and health of the installation is the senior commander's number one priority. Therefore, we implemented prudent measures intended to safeguard the health and safety of all personnel in the installation, including visiting patrons, while ensuring our readiness to meet our military mission. We want nothing more than to allow our patrons to enjoy recreational opportunities available on Fort AP Hill as soon as it's safe to do so. We continue to monitor local trends while planning to resume hunting and fishing in accordance with the Department of Defense and Army reopening guidance. Again, just so everybody understands, typically, we're going to have to trail the local guidelines a little bit because we have to kind of evaluate as the trend lines are going in the local community, the state, and the region, so that we can make sure that we can adjust our posture accordingly. So while I can't yet provide an exact date for zooming our installation recreational activities, we are encouraged by the current trends. We anticipate being able to reopen some fishing opportunities in the very near future with social distancing mitigations. Additionally, pending any unforeseen changes to the positive regional trends we're currently observing, we anticipate enthusiastically supporting a full schedule of upcoming hunting seasons. These seasons include small game, deer, bear, turkey, waterfowl, and trapping. Upon reopening, you will see some positive enhancements to our program. Our team continues to discuss best practices with our partners at Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries to limit social contact during game check-in and further protect the health and safety of our patrons and our workforce. Additionally, while our outdoor recreation cabin and equipment rental programs, as well as our physical fitness centers remain closed to all patrons, on reopening, customers will see similar safety measures implemented to limit social contact during customer service interactions. In closing, we deeply appreciate the patience of our valued patrons of our recreational programs, and we look forward to resuming full operations as soon as it's safe to do so. We'll post updates on our installation websites and social media forums as we are authorized to reopen installation activities. So please continue to monitor our updates. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Thank you for all of your support for Fort AP Hill and the United States Army. Thank you much. Thank you, Congressman.
Thank you, Colonel. One of the concerns, and my district borders AP Hill all the way around, is the enormous deer population we do see on Perimeter Road. I mean, if you'll drive through there in a late August evening, you will see many herds of a lot of deer. I mean, not just five and six, 25, 30, 40. And I'm hoping that when you full, you're talking about full access for hunting again, not just selected areas, because it is the total deer population that really impacts everybody in the county, whether you drive on 301, Perimeter Road, Route 17, 301, or Route 2. They all have impact from wildlife uncontrolled, and that being such a large percentage of the county, that it does have tremendous impact. And not everybody realizes, sometimes it raises our car insurance rates due to strikes. The sheriff can tell you, they've had a number of cars that they've struck deer with, and not just around AP Hill, but other places in the county, that hunting is the one management tool that we've, one of the only management tools that we have. So it is critical that that come back. And I've been contacted from many, many different states, asking what the status was, because there are a lot of folks that come here from Georgia, Florida, Pennsylvania. I was pretty amazed at how many people found their way to ask questions. And I'm sure Congressman Whitman has fellow congressional members that are probably asking him the same question, because my only comment to them is, you know, you can talk to your congressman, it's federal land. So we all need to work together to make this work, because it does locally have a bigger impact sometimes than we all realize when we look at our insurance bills. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to recognize Lieutenant Commander Gates for his service. He's going to be leaving us soon, and we will be welcoming a new commander in in about three weeks. One, on behalf of the board, to wish you best of luck. Hope to get to go fishing with that little boy of yours pretty soon. And I already told you, pork tail for roll, I got a place you can go down there and fish with him whenever you want. So as soon as you're relieved of your responsibilities at AP Hill, can be called.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know your relief's name?
It's going to be Lieutenant Colonel Andrew Aswell, fellow special courses officer.
Seems to be a trend with that. There's a trend with that.
Yes, sir. You know, obviously, you know, the amount of special operations training we do on the installation, special courses regiment seem fit to play special courses officers here. But Chairman, I recognize your comment about deer populations. As I say, we had the biggest, well, the most successful deer season we've had in recent years. Believe me, our law enforcement cruisers also have the same concerns out there, and, you know, they do damage. But, you know, the hunting program is critical to our efforts to cull the population, and it's deeply critical. So we remain focused on it.
We're just looking for a full opening and a full season. I mean, barring COVID, that really is really the goal.
Yes, sir. And, you know, obviously, as we look at the regional trends with, as you stated, there's folks that come in from really all along the mid-Atlantic to come to, you know, use our recreation programs. So we do have to keep an eye on that. But again, based off the trends we're seeing, you know, barring any, you know, any unforeseen issues with COVID, we really look forward to a full and successful season. Again, I just appreciate the great support of everybody here. I've had a chance to get to know all of y'all over the past two years, and just the warm welcome to the community. And just thank you for your support. And more importantly, thank you for supporting America's sons and daughters as they prepare for combat. It's highly important, and I really appreciate everything you do.
Mr. Forehand?
We're going to consider rifle hunting in the county. Is that, do you piggyback on the locality? Do, I don't know, it's not a bridge you've had to cross here, but just a curiosity, if you knew that off the top of your head, if we were to allow it in the county, would that roll over, too?
Yeah. At this point, that is not something that is immediately on.
What hasn't happened in the county yet either, but.
That's right. Yeah. So again, and we're always cooperating with, you know, our partners in Commonwealth, we're always looking at various ways in the program. The program always has to evolve, but at this point, that is not one of the things that we're currently looking at.
Mr. Thomas, Mr. Underwood, questions, comments?
No comments. Nope. No questions. Just want to say thank you to the Colonel.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you for both coming this evening.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to, at this time, have the 8 minutes and 47 seconds of silence as Mr. Underwood requested. I wanted to get through the presentations and reports. So if I could get everybody, we're going to do silence for 8 minutes and 47 seconds.
Mr. Colley, can you time that for us?
I am, Mr. Underwood.
Yeah. Mr. Colley has a timer there, I thought. Yeah, I'm a Cully, Mr. Cully has a timer there, I thought.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We will move to social services appointments. Mr. Forehand?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to reappoint Dr. Craig Beasley to the Social Services Board for the Madison District.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it, thank you. Um, consent agenda. Anybody wishing to remove any items for further discussion? Hearing done, I will take a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved. A second?
Motion, motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. That gives us a little bit of time. We could, do we want to do new business agenda item number five? Anybody issue with that? Yeah, well, we've got time. Um, agenda item five, is that Mr. Pardon or Mr. Cully?
I was going to handle it. Um, basically while I was out of town on that Friday meeting, y'all by vote closed, uh, the library, the visitor's center, and Parks and Rec. The rest of all this has been done administratively with discussions with the board, but, um, I didn't want to start opening that stuff up when y'all had voted to close it. So I'm just seeking authorization to, when timing is right and we can keep the things clean, we go into, you know, various other phases as a governor, that we have the authorization to reopen those. I'm not going to just randomly open them all up. You know, the library, we went back to curbside, um, pickup of library books. But Parks and Rec, we're planning to reopen things, but they're still basically closed. And, uh, obviously the visitor's center is closed. So we're just seeking authorization to basically give it to the administrative. We've handled all the rest of all the closings of all the other things. Just to put that back on it, what I would consider administrative authority.
Any questions?
I have a question.
I just have one, Mr. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ford.
Okay, uh, would we, would we also give Mr. Cully permission to open the community center? Uh, when things are back up to square, or when there's a special, uh, special event requested by the board?
Sure. I mean, that would be the easiest method, rather than trying to get a vote, I think, that makes. Because I know you need, we'd like to use the visitor's center next Tuesday or Thursday. So we have to have some method for that.
Right. If we could just add the EOC to what Mr. Cully wants to have administrative authority for, that would be great.
We can actually put all the buildings under administrative authority, and that way, if there's any other, um, situation that arises, he would have the ability to do that. How would that be as, as a solution?
That's fine with me. It's up to Mr. Cully.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
We, only thing we've got to be able to make sure is we, we can keep enough clean and supplies coming in, and some of that stuff's getting a little bit easier to obtain. That's the main thing, to be able to keep it clean.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Cully, the, um, before COVID hit, the basketball courts at the old Lady Smith Elementary, those were used by the community a lot. Um, every time you drive by there down Lady Smith Road, there's a lot of people out there playing basketball. And I think we, we had to take the hoops down because we were closed, but is, can we put them back up now? I think it's, it's summertime, and is that, is that a possibility?
Mr. Black, can I ask you a question? How do you play basketball and stay six feet apart?
It's a great, great point. Governor's got ten, ten feet apart outdoors. It's a great point.
Um, so yeah, we're going to work toward that. Maybe, um, you know, Governor said today maybe phase three was a couple of weeks away, so we'll, we'll look at that.
Phase three, okay.
That's where, we're looking to see what the conditions that they, they set aside. The, the sports that, that Parks and Rec's looking at doing are more where they will be, you know, adequate distance right now. But in something like that where you're not, it's just open, then, you know, you know how crowded that would be. If we put those back up, it's going to be crowded right there. Uh, we would prefer to wait a little bit longer on that.
Okay. All right, and I, yep, I completely, thank you, Ms. Long, appreciate it.
Mr. Cully? Mr. Forehand?
The, the skateboard park is generally not a high-contact location. Is that something that we could also consider opening up when we have signage?
Yeah, we would, we would, we would, that'd be one of the things we, we test Parks and Rec with, is to recommend what pieces of the main park we could open up, you know, satisfactorily. I, I, yeah, I've never, whenever I've been there, I've never seen a, you know, just normal amount of people there. So I don't see, it's not like basketball. That's a little bit different.
Mr. Cully, can you just check with other localities, what their plans on with the basketball courts and stuff? Okay?
Yeah, we've, we've been in contact. They're, they're starting to open up around us and what they're, what they're doing, of course, in pools and all that kind of stuff.
All right, thank you.
So I guess what I'm looking for is a motion to give Mr. Cully the ability to open all county facilities at appropriate times.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. We can go to 5A, early funding of the fire alarm. Mr. Cully, would that be out of the 21 budget or out of the 20 budget?
In, we would just remove it from the 21 budget, and it would be appropriated into the FY20 budget for, and transferred to the schools. So it would just be three weeks early.
So it would come out of the 21 budget, I guess?
Right, yeah, it would go, it would, I would pull that out.
Okay.
And if you give me enough time, I'll have that and change the resolution.
Um, we're going to take a break, so I guess that would give us time to do that.
I hope so.
Oh, can I ask you a question?
Mr. Thomas?
Is it, is it easier to give the school board authority to spend some of the money they already have? And then, then do what he's doing? Because they, they said at the school board meeting, they had saved or realized the savings of a hundred and twenty thousand from, uh, not having substitutes. Uh, if it was going to cause Mr. Cully that much of an issue with the resolution, we could just say they could use that money, and then it's still in this current budget. I mean, it doesn't make a difference. I, I was just trying to, you know, ease your way.
I don't know that it's a whole lot of trouble for me to pull it out of this FY21 proposed CIP budget and move it into that one, and they just return the money back. It might be actually cleaner.
No problem. That's fine. That's fine. Whatever's easy.
Yeah, we're on 5A. We can, if there's any other, no further discussion, Mr. Black?
I would move that the, uh, I don't know how I'm going to word this. I would move that we pull the money out of the 21 fiscal budget to, um, let the schools replace the, um, Lady Smith or Lewis and Clark Elementary fire alarm three weeks.
And the school board office.
And the school board office, three weeks early.
To appropriate to the FY20.
To appropriate to the FY20 budget, yes.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. We can take a ten-minute break, and we can come back for public hearing at that time. Well, 7:30 is public hearing.
...
I'm gonna reconvene the June ninth, two thousand and twenty meeting. Next on the agenda is a public hearing. Proposed for a proposed amendment of chapter one oh three, article eleven, section one oh three dash eighty-four and one oh three dot eighty-five. And chapters one oh three and article eleven of one oh three dot forty-four and one oh three dot forty-five, the code of Virginia. And this is, I believe, the emergency. Emergency real estate and personal property payments. Mr. Pardon?
It is simply to codify in a through the regular process what you previously did by emergency ordinance. With the extending the deadline for the personal property and real estate tax payments and when penalties and interest apply. Rather than really isn't advisable to have multiple emergency ordinances in a row. So what we're doing here is approving it by the normal route. And it does include a sunset clause that ensures that at the proper time, those temporary measures go away.
Okay.
I can explain in more detail if you'd like, but.
Anybody need further explanation? I've read it. The sunset is basically August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty?
Well, there one expires, I believe, July fifteenth, one expires August fifteen.
August fifteenth.
And the, of course, the due date for for payment is is June fifteenth for both real estate and personal property.
Questions from the board before we open the public hearing? Hearing none. And now open the public hearing on proposed amendment amendments to of chapter one oh three of the code of Virginia that applies to personal property and real estate tax. Anyone wishing to make a statement? Anyone wishing to make a statement? Anyone wishing to make a statement? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Board members' questions? Comments?
Question, Mrs.
Go ahead.
And and Mrs. Curran's budget impact, she believed that the comparison was ninety-two thousand dollars in penalties. So we expect that to be the possible impact of this?
I think short of having her here and knowing what the long term, I mean, it depends on when everybody pays, I guess, at this point. Because we're gonna go past June fifteenth into July and then August. So our revenue initially will be impacted through at least the fifteenth of July and then probably through the fifteenth of August. And then there probably will still be, as we talked about in our last meeting, some folks that still go beyond that. So I guess it's, I guess, on the low end, I guess we could use that as the low end estimate as a loss of ninety-two thousand.
Yeah, what she's what she's saying is that the amount, that's the amount of penalties collected from June to August.
Mr. Thomas, actually, Mrs. Curran is on, and I'm gonna let her answer, because I just now saw her name pop up.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Thomas, that is the worst, you know, that. And that's how much we collected in penalty. But if you have folks that are gonna pay late anyway, you may still get some of that penalty money back after August fifteenth. But we're seeing, we're seeing a lot of payments coming in now. So I'm not, you know, I think a lot of the payments are gonna be in by June fifteenth anyway.
Okay, and and the reality is that that we don't necessarily budget for those penalties, right, Mr. Colley?
On, oh, we do budgets for some, yes, sir. We look at a historical average. I run a revenue, you know, on an average of three year previous.
So this is within the average?
I I have to look that up.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adopt the amendment of chapter one oh three included in our board package.
Is that a sufficient motion, Mr. Colley? Do we need all the numbers or do we just need the major section?
I'll move that we'll adopt this as presented.
That'll work.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second any further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. I say that motion carries. Agenda item number six. Adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. Not here. Any comments, questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Not sure how we did this. I've spoken to Mr. Colley about this before with regarding to creating a, I guess, a pay plan for the sheriff's office. Colley's explained it to me before, but because the sheriff is under the county's pay plan, he needs to have certain things happen. But the reality is, I'd like to give Mr. Colley and the sheriff the authority to use two hundred thousand or I believe it was a hundred and eighty thousand in the previous spreadsheet we had at the sheriff's work session to take that money from his existing overtime budget and apply it to the current staff evenly. If you can see what I had before.
Mr. Colley?
I guess.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Black?
Do we have the authority to do that?
What he's, what Mr. Thomas has asked before is is that to take the the overtime money we already budget and put that into salaries. And I've explained to him that they're on our pay plan. And so y'all would have to approve taking that overtime money and doing away with it and putting it in the compensation line item. So it would move from one line item. It would not change the overall budget, but would would do away with overtime, which somebody's already earning. I can't tell you who, because I don't keep track of that. But the overtime would go away and that money would then move into be spread evenly, whatever, however evenly that works out with the fifty-some odd officers. So I, we haven't looked at the detail of that. But he can't just be told, hey, use your overtime and change your salaries. He doesn't have the authority to change salaries. That has, somebody has to get promoted.
Right.
Or you have to authorize, you know, a salary increase like we do when we budget a, you know, salary plus merit or cost of living plus merit like we did last year. So that would, that would take some, some work. But I'm not sure, and I don't know if Sheriff was here, that he's gonna want his overtime line item to disappear with no ability to pay overtime.
Yeah, what would happen?
No, it it wasn't all of his overtime. That's, that's one thing. And I I discussed this with the sheriff this morning, so I I can't see him if he's there or not. But the numbers, the numbers that I had was if we gave, if he used a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in his overtime, which was less than half, he could possibly reallocate that to three, three thousand dollars a person. And I don't know if we can do share screen here, but I've seen it done before and and others. So can I have the control of the screen? Oh, cheers. Oh. The host has disabled screen sharing. If you'd like, Mr. Colley, I can, I can quickly, oh, I'm the host now. This is the. Wow, that was really painful. Can, can you see my screen? Hope I can.
We can see it's you, Mr. Thomas. So however your camera works is sharing the screen is probably more complicated. I don't know what we're using for this.
Okay, I thought I was doing a screen share, but it was basically showing you multiple participants can share. All right, anyhow, the numbers are the same. I think we we looked at these numbers before in in our work session with the sheriff. And I I went through and took the number of deputies he had and and just multiplied the number that we 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 thought we could do two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, and three thousand came up to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in salary. I think there's a little more detail in another one. But if we could, if we could make the actual motion a hundred and fifty thousand of overtime, because there's three hundred, so we use half of that. And give him authority to work with Mr. Colley, create a pay plan. I think that's what you said, Mr. Colley.
Mr. Black has a question.
He's part of our pay plan. I, if we're gonna create one different for them, that would, that would take some work through HR.
I have, I have two, Mr. Thomas, and maybe I'm wrong, but I, last time I checked, there was about seventy employees in the sheriff's office roughly. And I could be wrong on that, but seventy times three thousand is two hundred and ten thousand. And then.
No.
And.
We were, we were just talking to deputies.
Certified, so. Yeah, and then we, so we'd need to know, we'd need to know the net number, which is kind of hard to do right now. And then the second aspect, what happens when he runs out of overtime money? I mean, you know, like, I mean, if we're gonna cut his overtime budget, and then he has certain things that he needs deputies for overtime, what happens when, you know, we're midway through the year and we're in financial straits and his overtime budget is gone?
Well, we're not, we're not taking his entire overtime budget. That, that's for sure.
But is he using most of it? I mean, if it's, if there's two hundred and what thousand in there for overtime, I would imagine that's why, when he presented us the budget, that's what he's using.
It was, it was close to three.
It was close to three hundred thousand.
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily sure we'd be using it at all.
I don't, I don't see him here, but I, my question would be, if we take that away from him, huh? When, when he needs officers and deputies in overtime for major accidents and stuff, where, where does that money come from?
Well, I know that there, there are some things that that sheriff is doing right now that that the overtime is paid for, like the state fair. Like the extra patrols he has in, in, in certain communities. And when there, when there are accidents such as the hazards, material spills. In those cases, the, the county bills that back to whoever the trucker is.
Major Moser, can you shed any light on this? Because I understand that this is gonna have to go through a whole pay scale situation that I don't know that anybody's.
It's my understanding that it's money that was not allocated this year is not asking for us to eliminate the overtime budget completely. So he wants the, whatever savings he has from this year, he wanted to actually give a raise to the deputies, which we understand is a reoccurring cost.
It's one-time money.
It's one-time money, so that is an issue that, but he's doing whatever he can in light of the budget constraints that we have. No pay raises for anyone.
What he could.
I, I totally understand.
I understand. I mean, I'm just, it's one-time money, and that's the problem with, because it's in your budget and it's in your budget next year. And if it's not spent, it's already still there. So that presents, you know, that's why all those go to capital issues.
He's trying to do whatever he can for the men because of the restraints that Joe had on the monies. And he's just trying to find out some avenue to give the guys a raise, since nobody's getting any raises. So he was just trying to do what he could, asking for some.
Well, that, 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 that's, that's, that's not quite it, Major, and I, I don't mean to contradict you, but.
I understand.
If, if your, if your deputy now is working overtime, the actual cost is one and a half times of their salary. The more, the more deputies we have, that overtime we would be using. By doing something like this, it would help him fill those four open positions he has already.
Right, which we've had four, four positions of open for quite some time. So that's a considerable amount of salary savings that we've had over the past year, so I think he's looking at that as well. But I just got off the phone with him, and he did not want to eliminate the overtime budget. That just makes no sense to eliminate it completely.
No, and, and, and that's not, that's, that's not, what I'm proposing at all is to eliminate your overtime budget. What I'm proposing is that we use some of that overtime money to help, to help you replace those four deputies you, you had open for quite some time, and also to help you retain the ones you have.
Right.
Because if, if a deputy makes ten dollars an hour, when he's on overtime, he's making fifteen dollars an hour. So if you hire another deputy, that deputy would be working ten, at ten dollars an hour and be able to do. Really, it's really simple math.
Right.
Because instead of having your people on overtime and, and, and possibly more, more fatigued or, or stressed out.
Right.
You would be able to spread that across the deputies you don't have.
Right, if we have.
And you would make. Yeah, and, and you'd make the ones that, that you don't have, or the ones you do have, happier.
Right.
So I'm sorry to Sheriff, we had this pretty much great.
Some, some of the overtime monies in the selective enforcement area, which is really just a pass-through account. It goes straight back to the county if it's not utilized. And you're right, we do have private entity agreements with different communities as well as corporations and, and, such as road projects. And we actually charge them a certain rate for the deputy to actually perform whatever duties they need. And then it gets paid directly to the county. Yes, sir, you're correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Long.
Mr. Thomas, I'm not saying that your, your thought or your idea is totally out of the ballpark. And I understand sort of what you're trying to do, but we're sort of, you know, in the ninth inning here. We've got, we didn't want to have a work, you know, nobody wanted a work session last time. I've already talked weeks ago about can we find funds for another dispatcher at least? And it's just so unsure about what's going to happen in the next six to eight months. So what I would propose, instead of us trying to figure this out right now, is that any. time in the year, once we know what recovery is going to be like, we could always go back and amend the sheriff's budget. But right now, there's a big unknown back out there, and if, if he's, if we have another big outbreak and we need a lot of overtime, that funds have to be there, because we may not have the money coming in. So my suggestion is we look at this possibility, but let's wait and s- see, and then come back, and we can always amend the sheriff's budget. And that gives us time to talk to HR and look at all the complications that would, would be. I would just be very nervous doing something so quickly. Um, so that, that's my feelings, Mr. Thomas. I, I'm all for trying to, to support. I understand that, uh, which is why I wanted, uh, to push for a tax rate before COVID. Maybe that was the best thing. Good Lord, had I dears knew more than I did that we didn't do that, but, um, I'm not ready to make a change on a perfectly good budget five minutes before we vote on it.
Well, well, we're not, we're not changing the budget, and this is, this is information we actually reviewed in February when we talked about the sheriff's budget at a work session. We didn't, we didn't make any decisions at the work session because we don't normally do that, but I believe the sheriff has walked back in the room, or he should be walking back in the room shortly.
Mr...
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, can Mr. Col- Colley chime in on this?
Mr. Colley?
Salaries overtime in the sheriff's office is a hundred thousand dollars, of which he's spent sixty thousand three hundred and twenty by April twenty-first. Overtime county is another line item of fourteen thousand, which he spent six thousand four hundred and eighty by April twenty-first. Salaries wages overtime selective enforcement, which is where they run radar, is a hundred and forty-five thousand in the budget, and he spent seventy-seven thousand three twenty-nine by April twenty-first. Those are the three line items of overtime. So where are we coming up with a hundred and thirty-five thousand? That has, those line items have all got to go down by a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and put a hundred and thirty-five thousand more in the compensation line item, which is salaries and wages regular, three million one hundred and sixty, no, that's a department request, two million five hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. So something's got to change in the, uh, of those line items to put any more in regular salary adjustments.
Mr. Mr. Chairman?
I may.
Mr. Black?
Um, I think one of the things the schools are here is the same thing. There's, there's, they have money left over in their budget, and we're not willing to make a decision tonight on that because we just don't know information from the state yet. And it would be very hypocritical of us to make, to make a decision on the, I have no problem if he's got money left over, we can talk about how that money is going, but it would be very hypocritical for us to make a decision tonight in the sheriff's office when we're telling the schools the same thing.
It also can't be one time, we have to realize it could be one time one, what the budget's gonna be this year.
Correct, and we don't know what the state's gonna say in December, which is gonna be the biggest problem. Any other discussion? Motion's in order. Well, we just said we're not gonna, we just listened to the numbers. Go ahead.
Sealy and Miss, and board members, I, I think what we're trying to do is what's been set aside for the overtime, because we all don't know what's happening and where we're gonna be come by December. So what we would like to do is use that overtime that we have that's in there to, if you would, give that to the deputies now, and then we could see where we are in December and then replenish.
Well, we won't be able to replenish, but with, Mr. Colley, if you want to go through those numbers again?
Salaries and wages overtime is budgeted a hundred thousand. How much is that going down to move to the compensation line item of two million five hundred and forty-three thousand two thirty-six? Salaries and wages overtime county is six thousand four eighty, and selective enforcement is one forty-five. So if something's gonna go away out of those to move into the other line item, I need to know the math to take those down.
Well, I, I think we could use that that's for the selective enforcement, and we'd like to see that money...
So that goes to zero, and a hundred and forty-five goes up in compensation is what you're asking for.
Yes, and whatever the board can approve, any amount of that, and we can reevaluate come in December.
Yeah, the one forty-five goes away until somebody puts it back.
I understand.
That's what he's asking for. I understand, so that's a number I can move. Doesn't change the budget, still the overall budget's the same.
But how much of that was already spent?
No, that, I'm talking moving into twenty-one.
I, I understand, but how much in the history has been spent?
Um, nineteen, a hundred and twenty-three thousand eight sixty, um, a- actual this year, seventy-seven thousand three twenty-nine through four twenty-one, and if you want, I can go back a little bit further, but it's, it's spent on every year, um, one seventy-three and eighteen.
And what, what department is this from? Or what category?
Selective enforcement, but doesn't that mean that, that he always ran selective enforcement on overtime? So now he could run selective enforcement not on overtime, because we may be able to help him fill those open positions?
Yes.
Well, there's nothing to charge to, you can't charge anything to that line item.
I, I guess my question is, how would this be different than with the schools since they're here? How would this be different than reversion money with them?
It's not reversion money. I, I...
But it's kind of like reversion money in the sense that when the, when, if he's not...
No, I'm not, I'm dealing in twenty. I'm dealing in FY twenty-one. He's agreed that the budgeted amount of one forty-five for selective enforcement can go to zero, and that money can then move up into the compensation line item where it can be used for raises.
How much money do we get from a selective enforcement in the budget?
What do you mean?
How much money comes from the state for selective enforcement into the, is, is a revenue line item in the sheriff's budget?
You gotta look for that.
Because if we, if we, if we, if he doesn't do selective enforcement and we lose that revenue, we're gonna lose it in two places. We're gonna reduce the overtime for that selective enforcement, and we're gonna lose the selective enforcement money we get from the state.
But he can still run selective enforcement.
Right.
He, he was running selective enforcement as overtime in that case. That's his overtime line item.
Was it all overtime?
Yes, the selective enforcement was the overtime money.
What's the, what's the selective enforcement number? Mr. Colley's checking that.
Now, Sheriff, you're still gonna run selective enforcement, even though it's not overtime, right?
They can run it for time for time. You can have them do that.
But that means that then you won't have a deputy on the, before it was a deputy overtime, so you still have the regular deputies on the road, correct?
No, could be those that are not working can run the selective enforcement for straight pay.
But you'd have to pay them straight pay for their selective, so it still would be overtime, it's just selective.
No, it, it would, it would still be selective enforcement, it just wouldn't be overtime.
They gotta be paid for overtime. You can't, you'd be some sort of Fair Labor Standards Act issue. You can't just switch and say, I'm gonna pay you straight time to do a job. If you're a paid employee, you've worked your, uh, I don't remember the hours, uh, that you all work, but you all work a different hour, but...
We do. Once they get past a hundred and seventy-one, from one seventy-two, they get overtime hours.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Just silly question. Explain selective enforcement to me.
Well, selective enforcement that the county has had for us on selective enforcement means that those deputies that are off duty, or we have a, uh, and it's basically those that were off duty would work that area for time and a half. So they got paid time and a half out of the selective enforcement funds. So on their days off, we have a lot of them do that. We have a lot of them that will come in two hours early and work selective enforcement, because our people have to be paid, as Mr. Colley said, up towards one seventy-one. They would get comp time, which they could use towards selective enforcement, so they, that's how that works. So the fair standard labor wouldn't have come into it till you hit one seventy-two.
And that's running radar?
Yes, ma'am. Running radar, we have it in the lakes. We've had selective enforcement both in Lake Caroline, Lake, uh, Landor. We've had it also in Lady Smith Village when we did stop sign enforcements. So we use those special projects for selective enforcement, simply so that we don't take one of our four deputies patrolling off the code to do that.
Right, but it wouldn't affect the time spent when those needs were, were needed. We still gonna get our fines for speeders and violators and that type of thing? It would just be rolling two categories into one?
Sort of, I guess, as, you know, Mr. Thomas, he's the number guy, and, and again, we're trying to do what we can for our deputies, and, and we have salary savings now, or we should, so, you know, I'm just trying to come up with ideas and work with the board to try to do what we can for our deputies.
Selective enforcement from DMV?
That's, no, that's, that's totally different.
From the clerk, and it's around five hundred and fifty or six hundred thousand dollars in fines and forfeitures.
Oh, and...
Fines and forfeitures is where it's at.
Oh, that's, yeah, well, that's just buried in, it says all total fines and forfeitures.
Right, and that's where selective enforcement, the money from the state goes to.
Well, that's, I have no, I have no way of knowing what that was.
Because Terry, when Terry was here...
We would get it.
Everything goes into the fines that you have.
Yes, so it's, it's not broken out as a line item.
We'd have to get that from the clerk of the court over in the, in the juvenile... Yeah, we, the money goes to the state and then comes back to us. We don't get it directly anymore. They take a percentage and then send us the rest. But all those numbers have to be worked on, because that's part of their line item for their budget, is selective enforcement is part of the sheriff's office budget.
Yeah, you know, Mr. Sealy, when we talked all about selective enforcement before and why the board approved that money, was for the fact of it, it brought back three to one.
No, no, I'm not arguing, but it's in your budget, is my point, is that five hundred thousand is in your budget.
As us bringing in revenues.
Right, right, I'm, no, no, I, I agree with that, but it's in your, my point is it's in your budget. So if that number, if you didn't, if there weren't as many tickets written and that number goes down, it's gonna affect your budget as well, because that's part of the revenue stream that actually funds the sheriff's office.
Uh, I thought that was, affects the fact of what comes back to the county, because if I'm not mistaken, if we do not use, unless I'm just gonna grab a number, a hundred and fifty thousand, you give us a hundred and fifty thousand of selective enforcement money, and if we don't spend that hundred and fifty thousand in selective enforcement, we don't get it. We don't get a hundred and fifty thousand to spend. So if we did fifty thousand worth of selective enforcement funds, that hundred thousand goes back to the county. We don't get it.
Correct, but if on the other side you don't use it and, and the fines and forfeitures goes down, that affects your budget on the revenue side to the county.
It would towards the county, yes.
And that would be, because that goes directly to your budget, because that's part of the funding stream for the sheriff's office, just like when we do, um, the ambulance fund, the, the recovery fund, it actually funds fire and rescues budget. So if those numbers are off, their numbers are off, and that's, that's what I'm looking at, is not just, not just what if we take the money, is what if that actually goes down and we're not collecting it, and then we're gonna get hit on the revenue side. We just need to look at this. I'm not opposed to doing it, I just, I can't sit here at this table tonight and say, I'm ready to go do that, because there's a lot of numbers we need to all look at to get there.
Can I help explain that? Can I help explain that, Mr. Sealy?
I don't know that explaining it tonight's gonna help.
Well, just, just, just take this quick thought. Selective enforcement was, was a line item created quite some time ago, so the county could actually manage the amount of money it spent, uh, doing speed enforcement versus the amount of money that was returned, when the money returned was actually in a specific line item. We could match this much speed enforcement, got this much money returned. In the past few years, the state has changed the formula, and that line item of return money has been dispersed into several different line items, so you'll never really be able to track it like we used to track it. The only way to track it is, I, I guess, the amount of tickets the sheriff office writes, and we had to go through a, a special step with the sheriff's office to make sure they use the county summons rather, rather than the state summons, because we get no money from the state summons. Is that right, Sheriff?
That is correct.
But when, when Terry Southworth is here, she actually laid out all those numbers for us in her letter. So we do know what those numbers are, and we do know what the trend is. She actually showed us that in the letter that she gave us during, during the very beginning of the budget. It's in her letter. I don't have it today. I'm not opposed, I just, with all the numbers, I can't sit here tonight and say that I can do this. I think it's something we need to work on, and we can amend budgets. We can change, I mean, tonight is adopting a budget. We need to get a budget adopted. It's, it's hard to change one now.
Mr. Sealy?
Can I add one other thing to the amend budget? We're gonna have to have a public hearing on the CARES Act money, because that's more than one percent of the budget, so we will be holding a public hearing on the CARES Act, maybe this be added to that. Yeah, I mean, I, Mr....
Mr. Black?
I mean, the, once again, it goes back, I mean, I, I wouldn't mind, I thought when we had the work session, uh, it was useful, beneficial, we saw your side of things through a different lens, you know, and you, you heard our side of things. Um, I'm not opposed to doing that, once we get more information from the state. I understand where you're coming from, but with Ms. Long says, we, we've been putting off the public hearing because of COVID, and it's actually benefited us by putting it off and putting it off the budget, and we're in the, not only in the bottom of the ninth, there's, there's, there's an O-two pitch, and, and, you know, we're down, so we really gotta get this done tonight, and, and, and like I said, I'm not opposed to it, but I wanna know, I like to have all the information in front of me before I make a decision, and you guys do a heck of a job, and it's something that we can look at at a work session, so maybe we can schedule one with them, another one, um, in the next few months, once we get better numbers, and you can tell your deputies that the board is not, uh, opposed to this at all. I don't wanna say we are, we just want to have the information of how it's used, because I want to understand it better, Sheriff.
Uh, I understand that. I mean, I pointed out in our work session how far we're behind everything else...
Yeah, I understand.
...within and from our neighbors.
Right, thank you.
Any other, I, I mean, I, I don't know where else to go. We're on agenda item number six. We can amend budgets.
Later on.
Anytime after we get more information, so it's not like we're locked.
Mr. Chair, knowing that we can amend budgets, we need to start someplace, I would move that we adopt the budget as presented. No, wait a minute, hold on. How do you want me to work?
We, we have two numbers that changed on the school CIP. That, that changes to seven hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred and forty dollars on the res, on that budget resolution. It's on the last page, under all the other, I had it open, but it's gotten covered up with spreadsheets.
Say the total again?
Hold on a minute, I wrote it down. Eight, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand five forty. It's the hundred thousand we removed. It was eight seventy-eight five forty, it goes to seven seventy-eight five forty, because you appropriated that hundred thousand fire alarms into twenty. That also changes the CDF fund that's right there on that same page to one million two hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars, because I don't need the hundred thousand in twenty-one, we're gonna appropriate out of there in twenty. And that's the only change, because that, that, none of that money was, was in the general fund, so it doesn't change the general fund budget.
Okay, do we have the change?
And that takes the total expenditures for all funds to one million, one hundred nine million three hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Which is the bold number right at the bottom. Hundred thousand out of all three. Removes that hundred thousand from our budget in twenty-one.
You can take a swing at it. I think I've got it, but I will let you try.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the budget with the following changes. School CIP figures to go to seven hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred and forty... School CIP figures to go to seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and forty. The CDF fund, one million, two hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred, five hundred and twenty-three. Giving us a total expenditures of all funds of one hundred and nine million, three hundred and six, eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second and, just a little bit of discussion.
Certainly, I just need a second. Second discussion?
So as far as where the schools are concerned, we can, and we are gonna schedule a meeting in regards to question number two and question number three.
As soon as we have, yeah, we need, it's probably gonna be July or early August when we get those. We need numbers.
Thank you.
More than anything.
Okay, and that will be a full board to board?
Board to board.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kelly, when do we expect our final numbers from the state? This general assembly's gonna have another, another work session, a special session sometime in late July or August, to try to deal with the billion dollar shortfall they had. So I don't know when you're gonna see final numbers from the state. They were a billion short going into the crisis, weren't they?
So now they're two.
So they could cut us mid-budget year? Oh, yeah, they've done it in the past. Cut the schools, cut the county, cut comp board, you know, money that comes to all the comp board positions, sheriff's office, treasurer commissioner.
And that usually takes place in December in what they call the caboose bill.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Underwood.
I'm gonna take a, a little different approach. We know that we're gonna have a revenue shortfall, and I looked at all of our capital improvement projects and our utilities and schools, and I, I think we need to take a, a look at some of the, it's my feeling, you know, I think we need to scrub, scrub this a little more. I think there are some savings that can go back into the general fund to ensure that we are not as bad off next year as we possibly will be. I can't support this budget.
Mr. Kelly?
Other than the school buses, all the capital's either paid for by CDF funds or borrowed. All the borrowing has to come back in front of you. So none of the, none of the capital that's borrowed will be anything done with it unless you approve the financing for it first. So that's just another one that's just in the CIP budget, nothing gonna really take place with it unless you approve the financing. And the transfer to the school buses is a different story, cause that's cash.
See, so we're, we're gonna have to review every capital project before we borrow. So even though we're approving the budget, doesn't mean we're, we're approving all of the other capital projects.
Right, I understand that.
Okay, just clarifying, because we have to have a baseline budget to work from, and we can make cuts from there anytime, but we have to have a budget, I mean, we have to have a budget this evening. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote. Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Nay.
Mr. Thomas?
We're gonna vote nay too.
And I'll vote aye. So the motion carries we've adopted the 2021 budget with two, with two changes. Item, agenda item number seven. Mr. Thomas asked to have this put on, it's, and this is actually something that we had in the past that we dissolved, so I was sort of surprised.
Not, not quite the same, Mr. Sealy, what, and, and I apologize to the board because I did not get the information to them yet, as I'd planned, and I, I know how the board is adverse to seeing data on the day of the meeting. So I will get something to the board at our call, call meeting for the school board budget, and then we could put it back on the agenda in July. What this was really intended to be was a, a, a public safety commission, but, but it was really, really focused on the things that are going on in the law enforcement arena now. And while we haven't had those sort of problems in Caroline, we wanted to be a little more proactive and create a citizens committee that could help work with the sheriff. The sheriff has, has asked on several other occasions if people in the community could help him hire folks, or help him find possible sheriff deputies. So this would be a case where we could do those, those sort of things. It could help him with community relations. The, the, the big problem with law enforcement now is it's all done by drive-by. There are no beat cops like used to have in the, in the city areas, or there are no cops who are, who are stationed in a particular area of the county like it used to be. So this would allow for a little more community policing work by working through people in, in the community. That's really what the, the focus could be. We, we would also add in the public safety folks, because there, there have been some instances in the county where the frog of a rescue squad, when it was running, would show up and someone would say, I don't want them to take me to the hospital. So there have been issues like that where the community needs to be made a little more aware and a little more open-minded. So all, all of that was to make sure we had a vehicle to actually be proactive to help law enforcement, EMS, and, and the community work better together. So that was not really my Reader's Digest version, but that, that's exactly what it was supposed to do. So it's, it's different than what we had before, Mr. Sealy, in that that group just worked between the volunteers, EMS, and the board of supervisors, just have a little broader scope and focus on those things that I mentioned. I, I did have a full write-up, I wasn't quite finished to get to you, but I, I do promise to get it to you for our call session if it's not next week. Okay?
All right, Mr. Thomas?
That was it, Ben, thank you.
Agenda item number nine, or number eight, I'm sorry.
We have to return to appropriate the funds by category for the school budget, so they'll have money to spend July one in their FY21. They are meeting on the 18th of June, so my suggestion would be Tuesday, the 23rd. Regular Tuesday night shouldn't be too hard to do unless somebody's got a conflict, and I would encourage you just recess from this meeting, and it wouldn't be a, you wouldn't have to do anything but.
I will be out of town, but I can zoom in, or I can, I mean, I, I can call in or whatever. I mean, that's, I would not be here.
The only, you, main, main items we, but might have one other item other than that, other than this one Mr. Thomas has, that will add to the agenda. But we don't expect much of an agenda, other than appropriate by category the school budget with the new numbers.
Yeah, I can call in.
Okay.
And, and mine will just pass up.
I'd say that again, Mr. Thomas?
Mine would just be pass out the information, so it wouldn't really be an action item agenda.
Okay.
Please, we both do.
And I have one other item that I, you know, in this COVID budget season that we've had, we have several organizations that have funds in the budget that they have expended some percentage of them and were unable to have the event, but they still need those funds. And I would just like to make a motion that any of the organizations that are funded in the budget be able to collect those funds so they can actually make those payments and stay healthy.
Is it?
They're in the budget.
Is a motion even necessary?
Normally, we, we haven't paid those events that haven't held them, so I think it would just help us if the auditors asked us, you know.
Why'd you pay?
Yeah, with, you know, what it was, so I think with these service organizations that are budgeted amounts, not over budget amount, but whatever the budgeted amount was, we would pay due to the.
Is this, just sort of curious, is this something that they're presenting that, the bills to us? Or, or do we just give them the check for what we normally give them in the budget?
That's your choice. I mean, I, we, we could get, if they've got invoices for everything, we could certainly pay up to the invoice amount. Some of them probably have invoices that total up more than what we are giving them. So I don't see that being a problem.
A lot of them, because it's insurance involved in all kinds of things. Can I get a motion to just make those regular payments that they've applied for?
So, man.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Question?
So, go ahead.
What, what groups are we talking about?
There's, they're in the budget under, uh, uh, service organization, so they're in, they're all in there with, it started where Fred started in the budget, it's gone now, Rappahanna Community Services Board, on down through all of the different ones, Caroline's Promise, all of those different ones. There's a whole list of them that we just, we normally pay either quarterly or pay one check if it's not a whole lot of money.
But I mean, we're talking, we're talking specifically what organizations that, that we're paying that aren't having their event. The county fair didn't have their event, so we're paying them.
That's one, Historic Port Royal.
Yeah, just any of those, any of those.
A lot of events just haven't taken place and haven't been able to take place due to COVID, so everything's been shut down, all fundraising.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to identify which ones we're talking about. All of them, no.
Anything else?
We're saying, we're saying all of the organizations, we're going to basically prepay before the event has happened.
Well, not necessarily prepay, but pay in the event the event didn't happen. Cause most of them didn't, and aren't gonna, we're going, I mean, we're not even to phase three, so anything probably through September is, is not gonna happen. So all, all those fundraising opportunities are gone.
Mr. Underwood, Mr. Thomas, if you've got your budget in front of you, cause I just had Mr. Kelly find it for me, it would be page fifty-one.
Page fifty-one, Anthony?
Page fifty-one, yes, sir.
And I assume right now you're talking about things that are being paid out of FY20 that didn't happen, and FY21 moving forward.
Until we get lifted from, from this, right.
From COVID.
So it is, it's gonna span two budget years.
So then, so then the, the funds will probably be returned through the CARES Act, probably to the county, is that correct? Since it was affected, we lost the opportunity for that revenue venture?
We'll try to be able to see whether we can get that through CARES Act or not. I'm looking at some of my committee people, and we'll, we'll see whether that's available to be funded or not.
Cause it is a loss. Any further discussion?
That makes all the difference in the world, but my page fifty-one is.
Given the title.
Mr. Thomas, it's under social service outside of agencies. And the number on that department is zero five three nine zero zero.
Do we have any idea which, which of these agencies have been affected the most?
Probably the county fair and Historic Port Royal at this point, but that's not to say that others, I don't know what Caroline's Promise has done. You know, they've, they've been able to, to marshal on, but I'm sure there's been events there that have been affected also.
So, so is that basically the request that those two agencies have, need funds to continue, or?
Well, those two for sure, and I don't know about others. I'm sure there's gonna be other requests that are already in the budget.
And these are COVID relief funds you think can be replaced?
I think potentially, I don't know for sure, but I think they could be applied
That total amount is. So really, we're gonna have the total amount available, but we're just not going to send out money even though people, for people have not requested, is that correct?
Well, we send checks to all those organizations at different times of the year, just, Mr. Kelly can answer that.
Yeah, some of them we send, but, but most of these other organizations send us an invoice of some sort to have for the audit, requesting their funds, that they're gonna have their event, I'm pretty sure.
I guess my question then, wouldn't it be, make sense to just see as, as the bills come in, and then we can make a decision based on that, and then we can apply for the CARES Act money? Because some of the organizations, some organizations.
Right, they're sending bill.
Right. Right.
Right.
Yeah, we gotta send it by some. Wouldn't it be cheaper for us to just do it by invoice total? And then if something goes over budget, then it can be brought to us in consent?
Well, nothing's gonna go over budget, they can only apply for what they got, what's in the budget. Nothing over that.
Right, okay, well then.
It's just what's in the budget.
Yeah, so wouldn't it be, make sense to cover the invoices then?
So the fair is getting fifteen thousand, what's that?
We do that on individual basis?
No, it's budgeted.
Is it budgeted now?
I started budgeting.
See, and that may not happen either.
At a point where they wouldn't get it.
Right. The problem with these other events is they were all planned, knowing, long before this Any other discussion?
So what are we doing by invoice or by just flat?
I, I think you had to just what's in the budget, cause they can't go over what's in the budget. We, we're not gonna take an invoice for more.
Well, if they invoiced, what's, I mean, it was, it's sense to do by invoice, if they wanted or needed the funds, they get invoices.
Do you wanna go above the budgeted line item in the budget?
No, no.
Right, I mean, cause I can tell you the ones I've seen would exceed the budget, the line item budget, they're looking for what's in the budget, what's in the line item that we've actually allocated, is in the folks that I've talked to.
If they give me invoices that are more than the budget, we'll just write them the check for the budgeted amount, not the invoice amount.
Okay.
Right?
I don't think it's a good practice, but.
Well, I, I don't know what we do, or you lose those organizations.
They still get, they're still, they're still running.
It was a request, I brought it.
It's more these local civic people that are in there that, all the other civic.
And then we're doing this for all organizations that fall under there.
The rest of them are, a lot of this regular budgeted organizations like Thurman Brisbane or RSCSB, we send them checks quarterly, they're still all operating in some sort of fashion. I think it's more the organizations under here that hold events that we give them money for. Frog Level Day is one of them, and then there's a May, May Day that used to be a Ladysmith Day, that's now some sort of event, I think, what is it, I think it's in the budget, but they renamed it, they just didn't get renamed in the budget. But there's, there's events like that, that the board's historically given three thousand dollars to, or this, that, or the other.
So, so my, so then if that, if that's the case, it's not all, it's not all the organizations under this, uh.
No, not all of them.
Zeroes, just cause you're, you're saying you're paying some out at different times, we're making exceptions for certain people, and we just need to say that.
Yeah.
People have made a request, and we just decide, and it's, it's not all or none, we're not changing the whole process here.
No, they're not, they're not grouped in two different lumps, they're all just lumped under one. Some of those organizations are, are budgeted, and we just pay that quarterly. Some of them are event-based.
I don't like it. I don't like it.
Correct.
I have a motion and a second, I'm gonna move on. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Nay.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, aye.
And I vote aye.
I wanna make sure they're all.
And I guess we have already decided that Tuesday, the 23rd of June, we are gonna recess this meeting to 6 o'clock. Closing board comments, Mr. Forehand?
Nope, it said on my, in the beginning.
Mr. Black?
Once again, I'll reiterate, I wanted to thank the teachers and thank everyone for coming out. You know, I think we will be having a dialogue moving forward once it becomes clear what the state budget numbers are, so, thank you.
Mrs. Long?
I look forward to working through this year. This is going to be an interesting year financially for everyone. And I think we all just have to keep our hearts and minds in the right places, none of us have a crystal ball. I didn't make any opening comments because this has been a really stressful period of life for all of us. But I just want to remind everyone, the old golden rule that we all were, well, most of us were taught is, you know, you treat people the way you wanna be treated. Or we remember other words like love your neighbors yourself or go forth and love others as I love you. And we're gonna get through this together, it's gonna be a tight year. But I am so grateful to live in a community where people aren't afraid to let that caring spirit come through and to join together to know that sacrifices have to be made and we have to prepare for the future as best as we can while taking care of the present. So let's just all try to be patient and hang tough and support one another and support your neighbor. And I look forward to our meetings in the future as we get through this and just say a prayer that we're gonna pounce back stronger than we were before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Underwood?
No comments, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Thomas?
Just to repeat again, that I'm gonna send out an email to those who can participate in a real conversation on race and race relations and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. We're doing the best we can with the numbers that we don't have financially. I think we're all in for a little bit of a ride with the state in that they can't decide what their revenues are gonna be and it's gonna affect, I mean, it's gonna affect everybody, whether it be the sheriff's office, the schools, the sheriff's deputies in the courthouse that are comp board salaries. The reach is gonna be farther than most of us realize because we sort of stay in our own lanes with what we do on a monthly and yearly basis. But it's gonna affect us in places that we may not even realize. So just be mindful of the effects and it's gonna affect real people. You know, folks at the state level, there may be cuts at the state. There are counties that have already made cuts, cities that have made cuts and other localities looking at what their budgets look like and what's gonna have to happen. The hope here is, I've said many, many times, is we don't lose anybody. We keep the same people we have today through this whole episode. Because I know there's an end to this at some point, but the goal is keeping everybody that we have and with the same amount of dollars that we currently have. And that really has been my goal through this whole thing. So thank everybody for coming this evening. We are gonna remain adjourned, recessed until the 23rd at 6 o'clock in the EOC or here? Here.